Good evening, welcome. It's a regularly scheduled meeting of the Bangor City Council. Today is Monday, August 26, 2024, at 7:30 PM. We begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask the city solicitor to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a portion of the meeting set aside for public comment. Public comment, whether in person or through Zoom, requires you to state your name and whether you are a resident of Bangor. Inappropriate or offensive remarks may be interrupted and removed. The council chair has discretion over the time allowed for comment. Tonight, we will have 60 minutes for public comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment and no more. If you do not live in Bangor or own property in Bangor, please allow those who do live and own property here to have the opportunity to speak first. If you'd like to offer comment on any item that does not appear on the regular agenda, you may approach the podium. On Zoom, the public may be recognized to speak by the hand raise function or on the phone by pressing *9.
Good evening, my name is Michael Norton. I live at 83 Elm Street in Bangor, apartment C. Anyone who needs a director in motion picture making can go to the DGA in LA, or the DGA in New York, or the DGA online and look for a director. And when you input the director's name that might be able to help you, the return is another company that's not a nonprofit organization like CitrinCooperman.com. So if I'm looking for the director, for example, of Goodwill Hunting from 1997, I input his name and it returns to me a corporation outside of the DGA. But when I call Citrin Cooperman and ask for the director, they act like they are the same way the members of the Directors Guild staff at the Directors Guild of America. So I'm hoping that we can get rid of the DGA's system of false direction in this world and their equivalents in the nations outside of the US.
Mr. Norton, is this related to city business?
Yes, I'm bringing it home, thank you. Because every 1,440 minutes of the day, that's one day according to the clocks you use in your systems and ours, carbon has a lead in our title system, in our sustainability system, in our energy system. How many times? None of those people know how many times. And the students in our classrooms don't know how many times. So it's not a block the school's system at the DGA. And it shouldn't be anywhere in America that blocks education from knowing how many times carbon of all the other elements, every day, has the lead in that cycle, that carbon cycle and that environment cycle on our planet. So the connection is, why do these companies exist in LA and New York and organizations when we're here in Maine and we don't have a voice to speak with or do business with? That's the relationship. Thank you.
My name is Wayne Mallor. I live at 103 Essex Street. And usually, I'm here to bring the complaint to an issue. But here, I'm here today to thank Lisa for her efficiency in preparing the signatures for the people who are running for office. And also, we came early today. I guess I haven't learned to read yet. I thought it was 7:00 and it was 7:30. But by coming early, we got to speak to the chief of police and we resolved an issue that I would have had to bring before you. So it's been a very successful day for us.
Okay, Sandy McIntosh. Over there, 55 East Broadway in Bangor. And I'm talking about the Main Woods Development. It's off Essex Street, Lancaster and East Broadway. And how much more destruction on our life and homes do we have to take? The wind tunnel from the interstate, because they took down all the trees right to the interstate from East Broadway, have taken the shingles off the roofs of many homes on East Broadway. The noise and traffic from the interstate is horrendous. I live at 55 East Broadway. It's the last house on East Broadway before the interstate. And the noise of the construction behind my home has been outrageous. My husband has PTSD from Vietnam for fighting for all youth people for freedom. And now we're putting up with this noise. They're like 25 feet from my back tree line. It's terrible. And the dirt that is flying through my home every day from dump trucks coming down East Broadway. And they fly down the road, flying, dirt flying, digging behind my house, dirt flying. And it's causing health problems from people that are living around that area, from Essex Street and Lancaster and East Broadway. But people keep calling me. Nothing I can do. I keep trying to put signs out to stop it. But the planning board allowed it. The planning board in the beginning come up and walked the area and told all of us homeowners, we had a gag order, couldn't say a thing. We couldn't even talk to the planning board, but Emily could. East Broadway, the narrow street, has already caused problem. Mike Wood hit our vehicle and took the mirror off. It's narrow, it's six feet narrower than regular roads. No one on the planning board would listen to information that the neighborhood was presenting. Where is the planning board now? Come see and talk to us. I thought Bangor had all the answers. Also, an address for another development that is surrounded by single homes like us. We surround this development. And they were supposed to use three acres out of 12 for these condos, anonymous condos. Now my house looks like a little munchkin house because they're way up in the air. But you've got to understand, it could go up 35 feet. But they hold dirt in to build it up, five and six feet. So now they're up 40 feet. Where is Bangor? Why don't someone come in and help the neighbors? Help us, somebody, help us. Thank you.
Mr. Norton, you've already spoken, please have a seat.
Can I have thirty more seconds?
No, please have a seat.
All right.
Thank you.
Six years now, I haven't met a Japanese person in this city. They're good business people. Have a good night.
I try.
What you do, what you say?
Well, I try.
Start, Scott. I'm passing. You start talking.
Don't you touch that timer yet.
I already am. You both start talking.
My name is Scott Hardy, and I'm a resident of Bangor. I'm here tonight to talk about OPC, Overdose Prevention Centers, Part 10. This is my 10th time here talking about it. I have a copy coming from Carla. Overdose Prevention Centers, also known as supervised injection sites or safe consummation sites or facilities where individuals can use drugs under the supervision of trained staff. The legality of these centers varies significantly across jurisdictions, reflecting a complex interplay of public health priorities, legal frameworks, and social attitudes towards drug use. In other countries like Canada, Australia, and several European nations, OPCs operate legally and are integrated into broader public health strategies aimed at reducing harm and preventing overdose deaths. These countries have recognized the public health benefits of OPCs, including reduced transmission of infectious diseases, decreased public drug use, and lower rates of overdose fatalities. In the United States, however, the legal status of OPCs is more contentious. Federal law, in particular, federal law, particularly the Controlled Substance Act, poses significant barriers to the establishment of OPCs. The "crack house" statute within this act makes it illegal to operate any place for the purpose of using controlled substances. Despite this, some cities such as Philadelphia and New York have pushed forward with plans to open OPCs, arguing that these centers are essential to addressing the opioid crisis and saving lives. Legal challenges and debates continue, with proponents emphasizing the public health benefits and opponents raising concerns about enabling drug use and potential legal conflicts. The evolving legal landscape reflects broader social debates about drug policy, health, public health, and the role of harm reduction in addressing substance use disorders. Colorado State Legislature created a bill, a bill for an act concerning the ability of a municipality to authorize the establishment of lifesaving overdose prevention centers. It's too long to read, and I have attached a copy. And we would be grateful to any one of you here or all of you here reaching out to our state legislatures that you know. And that's Part 1. Now, Part 2 for my time run. So the last time I was here, I talked briefly about the waste facility in Hamden. And I received a reply back from the executive director, the MRC. And I'm going to read this thing. Because as you recall, I stated last week and I read in articles that the MRC had put out that this is still under, is still being engineered. Still being engineered. And his reply to this, they had a Part B.
Send it to us in writing.
Next, will you send it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Do you want to give something?
Yes.
I'm going to do the hand. Yes, I'll give it right to the clerk.
I own property in Bangor. My name is Kelly Hachi. And I live on North French Street. I live near the nightmare housing project called Main Woods off Lancaster. I'm here because of the many nightmares from this project. This runoff gigantic pond near East Broadway that breeds mosquitoes that, as you know, can kill us. My neighbors and I have contacted a large number of agencies in the city expressing our frightening nightmare. Many phone calls have gone to David Warren. I wanted on the record that something has to be done to test the mosquitoes for deadly diseases and stop the immense amount of water that breeds insects. And I attached a couple photos in here for you to show you. Just this week, I put in a complaint to the CDC Control, the Center for Disease Control in Washington DC. I passed out a few pages from the Maine Department of Health and Human Services Center for Disease Control and Prevention. You can look it up because I gave you the title page of it. So I'm just going to give you a few highlights. By the way, they haven't helped us, by the way. We've contacted about 12 agencies just to test it. I wanted to test our mosquitoes ourselves. You can't buy a kit. You can't even pay for it. We want to know if we're going to die. We, the neighbors, don't own the land where this water is pooling. So there isn't much we can physically do except wonder how many of the new homeowners will get the potentially deadly bite. Some of the highlights from what I passed out are. Appendix 1, everybody got. And it says, this is from the state of Maine, who is responsible? The local municipality in every area is responsible for testing, making a plan, and keeping the public informed on mosquitoes. That's all I'm talking about, mosquitoes. Maine has evidence of triple E infection in all 16 counties. The cost of a human, single human case of triple E being bitten by one mosquito ranges from $21,000 for mild transient illness to as much as $3 million for individuals who suffer permanent neurological damage from a mosquito. The town level responsibilities, which is Page 7, because I only put in a couple pages, is the town is to develop and update a local integrated pest management program, conduct mosquito surveillance to identify triple E, JCV, and WNV, which I think you all know. Provide information to the public on mosquito-borne disease and disease risk. This testing is not a one-and-done deal. These bugs breed as long as it's not frost. There are also two photos I want entered into the record. The pond sits on the Arctic Brook. See how green it is in the picture? It's not fenced in so babies and animals can drown in it. It's a giant pond.
A giant?
Giant.
You had your opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Before we move on, before we start the timer for this gentleman, I would like to discuss this. We know there's a town in Massachusetts that is curfewing people after 6:00 PM because of triple E. I think it's a valid concern. Debbie, perhaps you and I can talk this week about options. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tyler Shanahan. I reside in Bangor on Iron Street. I am going to pick up where Mr. Scott Hardy left off. So in regards to the MRC, the response Scott got was, to answer your question, remember that MRC had no ownership of the facility three years ago. So we had no say in financial decisions or technology. We just owned the contract that supplied the waste to the facility, multiple waste solutions. Now we own 10% of the facility and 100% of the land it sits on. And we also sit on the Board of MWS in the management role. Our partner, Innovation Resource Recovery, is a leading resource recovery company specializing in transforming waste into valuable resources. If we had the same leverage three years ago, the facility would still be operating today and not have been tied up with banks and creators for the last three years. So the MRC backup plan is to oversee this every step with 115 community voices and regulatory authorities guiding us every step of the way. Our backup plan is the same as our current plan. Stay involved in every aspect of this facility day to day, just like we did when we bailed PERC, out of financial trouble 30 years ago. Thank you for your inquiry and let me know if you have any questions. And that was from Michael Carroll, the executive director of MRC. My name is Tyler Shanahan, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? If so, please approach the podium.
Dear City Council, Recently, the city authorized an increase in benefits for city employees for recruitment and retention. The union agrees that this is an important change to the benefits of the city. To the union's surprise, the city refused to grant the increase in benefits for any union employee while granting them for non-union employees. This has caused a significant decrease in the morale of city employees. The union has attempted to resolve this matter and has not been successful. The city initially refused to negotiate this matter as all contracts were closed. The union requested a meeting with the city manager. We were referred to the Assistant City Manager. The union presented the Assistant City Manager with the attached petition. The city agreed to open the contracts but only if the union was willing to give up comp time in exchange for the vacation time. Decreasing the benefits of city employees will not help with recruitment or retention. In fact, it will defeat the intended purpose. We ask that the city council extend this increase in benefits to all city employees, not just non-union, without removing other benefits from its employees. The attached is the petition signed by employees of Local 0926. It represents the public works, airport customer service representatives, airport operations officers, airport ramp attendants, airport dispatchers, airport security, airport mechanics, and airfield maintenance, over 100 Bangor city employees. As always, the union appreciates your cooperation and willingness to resolve this issue.
Allen, your sound. Thank you. Okay.
To Government and Institutional Service District GNISD, first reading and referral to Planning Board meeting on September 3, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And you'll be assigned to speak with her.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no doubt, the items are referred. Unfinished business.
24-215 ordinance amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code, District map, to rezone a property located at 193 Warren Street from urban residents 1 District, URB 1, and urban residents 2 District, URB 2, to urban residents 2 District, URB 2. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance would amend the Land Development Code, District map, to rezone the property at map lot 035-081, located at 193 Warren Street, from a combination of urban residents 1 District, URB 1, and urban residents 2 District, URB 2, to only urban residents 2 District, URB 2. The total area requested to be changed is approximately 0.29 acres. The applicant and owner of record is Christopher Prue. This area is within the growth boundary shown in the 2022 Comprehensive Plan. And the future land use map in the plan shows this property in the urban neighborhood area, which consists of medium-to-high-density residential neighborhoods surrounding the downtown. The Planning Division finds this proposed change to be in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan. This item was reviewed and recommended by a vote of six in favor and one against at the Planning Board meeting on August 20, 2024. I would move ordinance 24-215.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. My question is, do we know the reason for the vote against at the Planning Board?
I'm a planning officer. Voting against was from the chair. It was because he felt that this change didn't align with the Comprehensive Plan and that he felt the zoning change should be done at a neighborhood scale rather than person by person.
Thank you. Discussion or doubt on this issue?
No question.
Is it, it's on this item? Yes, please approach.
I was on the Planning Board at one time. My question is, it looks like we're getting into an area of spot zoning, which is in violation of most zoning rules. If you're going to do a zoning for one, you have to look at all the surrounding properties. And I'm not getting the impression that they did that. Is that correct? Is that not true? Spot zoning is not allowed. And this is a spot zoning issue, in my opinion.
Yep, we're going to invite the planning officer back up to answer the question.
Yep, so this is actually a conversation that's come up. And according to a lot of case law that's occurred over many decades now, it's actually not considered spot zoning if it's done in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan and if it's also in alignment with the surrounding land uses. So that is something that was taken into account in their deliberations. The rest of the planning board didn't outright say they agreed that it was in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan, but they also didn't say that it wasn't. So it can be assumed that they would feel that it was. And also, we do provide a description in our memo to the Planning Board about, you know, what the surrounding land uses are. And in the general vicinity of this particular parcel, it is primarily urban residents 2 with many multifamily dwelling units. Any questions on that?
Thank you. No further discussion, the ordinance requires a roll call vote.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Fornia?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Chumbel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobada?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Item 24-215 has passage. Next item, please.
24-237 ordinance amending Chapter 165 Land Development Code by exempting certain uses from requiring a land development permit. Counselor Fish?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This ordinance will amend Chapter 165 Land Development Code by replacing the language in subsections 7-10 of 165-111A with language that more closely matches the state subdivision requirements. The current language requires the land development permit for construction or renovation of uses with three or more residential commercial units. While the code does not need to require this permit for new construction of three or more units to comply with state subdivision law, the additional requirements on renovation on commercial units are more restrictive than the state's subdivision requirements. They discourage investment into the renovation of existing structures and they create a burden for small-scale property owners simply wanting to add one dwelling unit to their property or wanting to renovate previously discontinued units to bring them back online. This work is keeping with the Comprehensive Plan in the council directive to reduce regulatory barriers to housing development. This item was reviewed and unanimously recommended at the Planning Board meeting on August 20, 2024. I move for passage 24-237 ordinance.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Questions or discussion on this item? Roll call vote.
Counselor Dean?
Yes.
Counselor Fish?
Yes.
Counselor Fornia?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Chumbel?
Yes.
Counselor Yakobada?
Yes.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Item 24-237 has passage. Next item.
Public hearing, 24-249, order authorizing issuance of $4,191,000 of the city's general obligation bonds for the city's FY25 capital improvements and a tax levy therefore. Counselor Chumbel?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just going to read the summary before opening the public hearing. This order would authorize issuance of $4,191,000 in general obligation bonds for the following purposes: $1,225,000 for streets and sidewalks; $1,188,200 for infrastructure improvements, including Ohio Street Bridge; $850,000 of water quality infrastructure improvements; $427,800 for equipment and vehicle replacement, plow trucks; $500,000 of building improvements, central fire station. These projects were reviewed during the recently completed FY25 budget process. So I would move to open the public hearing for this item.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Public hearing is now open.
Seeing no one approach, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second. Public hearing is closed.
I would move for passage of order 24-249.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further questions or discussion? Order 24-249 has passage. Next item, please.
Public hearing, 24-250, order authorizing issuance of $2,400,000 of the city's general obligations bonds for a public safety training facility and tax levy therefore, subject to approval of the voters of the city of Bangor. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This order would authorize the issuance of up to $2,400,000 in general obligation bonds for a public safety training facility. During the recently completed FY2025 budget process, the city council approved moving forward with this project in the amount of $2 million. As this order is subject to voter approval, the recommendation is to increase the authorization by 20% to ensure, if approved by the voters, the project will have adequate funding available. In 2012, voters approved a charter amendment, Article 8, Section 19A, which requires all single capital improvement projects in excess of the established threshold, threshold, sorry, that do not meet one of the eligible exceptions of the charter be approved by the voters. As the estimated project cost is in excess of the current threshold of approximately $1.79 million, this borrowing will require-
this borrowing will require voter approval. If this order is approved by the City Council on August 26, 2024, there will be a separate order introduced under New Business directing the question B placed on the November 2024 municipal ballot. This item was reviewed and recommended at the Finance Committee on August 18, 2024. I would move to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second. Public hearing is open.
Seeing no one approach, I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion, second. Public hearing is closed.
I would move passage of order 24 dash two-five-zero.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the order. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, order 24 dash two-five-zero has passage. Then we'll go to voters. Unfinished business.
Public hearing, 24 dash two-five-one order authorizing issuance of $10,158,731 of the city's general obligation bonds for various school capital projects and a tax levy therefore. Counselor Yakobada?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This order would authorize the issuance of $10,115,731 in general obligation bonds for the following purposes: $3,323,447 for air quality improvements at the William Cohen School; $4,185,547 for air quality improvements at the James Doughty School; $1,922,750 for curtain wall replacement at the Bangor High School; and $683,987 for roof structure improvements at the Mary Snow School. The bonding request represents the remaining project costs after other funding through COVID funds and the school revolving renovation fund have been allocated. The projects and the required additional funding needs were discussed during the recently completed fiscal year 2025 budget process. The city's charter requires that bonds issued for a single capital expenditure over a prescribed amount are subject to voter referendum unless the City Council finds, determines, and declares that an emergency exists. As described in the findings set forth in the order, the air quality deficiencies and curtain wall conditions create an unacceptable risk to the health and safety of the residents of the city and the users of the schools referenced. Therefore, the City Council finds, determines, and declares that the capital expenditures for the school improvements constitute an emergency and shall be accepted from the referendum approval requirements of Article 8, Section 19A1 of the city charter. This item was reviewed and recommended at the Finance Committee on August 5th, 2024. I move to open public hearing for order 24 dash two-fifty-one.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no doubt, public hearing is open.
Seeing no one approach, I move to close public hearing for order 24 dash two-fifty-one.
Second. Public hearing is closed.
I move the passage of order 24 dash two-fifty-one.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, 24 dash two-five-one has passage. New business.
Public hearing, 24 dash two-six-one order proposing an amendment to the Bangor City Charter, Article 6, Section 3, nominations for elective officers to be made by petition to be included on the November 5th, 2024 municipal ballot. Counselor Fish.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This order would place a proposed amendment to Article 6, Section 3 of the Bangor City Charter on November 5th, 2024, regular municipal ballot for consideration by Bangor voters. Article 6, Section 3 of the city charter limits the number of petitions for candidates for office a voter may sign to no more than the number of candidates to be elected to that office. The city's legal department has determined that this restriction is of questionable enforceability as it restricts political speech, which is highly protected under the United States and main constitutions. Staff recommends that the restriction be removed from Article 6, Section 3. The item was reviewed and recommended for passage at the August 5th, 2024 Government Operations Committee meeting. I move to open the order 24 dash two-sixty-one for public hearing.
Second. Thank you, we have a motion, a second. Public hearing is open.
Seeing no one approach, I, I, I moved that we close public, it's been a while. I moved that we close public hearing.
A lot of good stuff, suddenly.
Yeah.
There's a motion, did I hear a second? Second. Thank you. Public hearing is closed.
I move for passage of 24 dash two-sixty-one.
Second. Thank you, there's a motion and a second on the table for order 24 dash two-sixty-one. Questions or comments? I'll just add that this seems like a little thing, but to me it's really important. We don't always get things right in terms of rules and ordinances that we pass, but in the case where it's found that something may restrict people's liberties and the rights of our voters, the rights of our citizens, I think it's important that we correct it as soon as we realize that an error has been made. So, small thing but big in terms of protecting people's liberties and free speech. Seeing no objection, 24 dash two-sixty-one has passage. Next item.
24 dash two-six-two order submitting Bangor Public Safety Training Facility orders 24 dash two-five-zero to referendum. Counselor Fornia?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for order 24 dash two-sixty-two. Second. Thank you. This order would submit order 24 dash two-five-oh entitled, "Order authorizing issuance of $2.4 million of the city's general obligation bonds for a public safety training facility and a tax levy, therefore, subject to approval of the voters of the city of Bangor, adopted contemporarily," I'm going to have a hard time.
Contemporary, yes.
That word. "Herewith, the city council, the Public Safety Training Facility Order to a referendum vote as required by Article 8, Section 19A1 of the city charter." The charter of the city of Bangor, Article 8, Section 19, requires the city council to submit to voter referendum orders and resolves issuing the, excuse me, and resolves authorizing the issue of general obligation securities of the city in a principal amount of five one-hundredth of one percent of the last certified state valuation of the city for a single capital improvement or item of capital equipment. Based on the city's 2024 state valuation, the limit is any principal amount of $1,799,725 or more and less determined to be an emergency by the city council. If approved, the city clerk will make notice of election to the citizens of Bangor and prepare ballots for November 5th of this year.
Thank you, Counselor Fornia, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, 24 dash two-six-two has passage.
24 dash two-six-three order appointing nominees to various boards, commissions, and committees. Counselor Fornia?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for order 24 dash two-six-three.
Second.
This order will authorize appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. Vacancies were advertised and the applicants were interviewed by the City Council's Personnel Committee on August 12th. The committee has completed the process of interviewing applicants and developed recommendations for full council consideration. This item was reviewed in executive session on August 12th and put forth for approval by the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, we have a motion, a second. Questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, 24 dash two-six-three has passage.
24 dash two-six-four order authorizing the city manager to execute a third amendment to lease with Waterfront Concerts LLC to finalize the temporarily expanded lease area. Counselor Dean?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This order would authorize the city manager to execute a third amendment to a lease agreement dated November 4th, 2019 between the city and Waterfront Concerts LLC. Staff have been working with the Waterfront Concerts to finalize the expanded lease area that was required to accommodate additional emergency egress required by the state fire marshal prior to the 2023 concert season. As part of the review by the state fire marshal, it was found that additional emergency egress was needed to accommodate a full venue of approximately 17,000 people. The second amendment to the lease executed in June of 2023 established a temporary expanded lease area for the use with the understanding that the expanded lease area would be finalized when the construction of the permanent steps was completed to accommodate the secondary means of egress. The construction of the permanent steps has been completed and the boundaries of the permanent expanded lease area have been established and confirmed by the city's Engineering Department and Waterfront Concert staff. In addition to this additional lease area, Waterfront has agreed to provide the city with the use of Waterfront's portable stage. The city has needed a portable stage since the city's portable stage aged and became no longer usable. Waterfront has also agreed to coordinate with the city's Community and Economic Development Department to develop an appropriate and aesthetically pleasing mural design to be painted or applied onto the substantial portion of the length of the Waterfront's wooden fence that faces Main Street at their expense. The mural is to be completed no later than the start of the 2025 concert season. Waterfront has acknowledged and agreed that the final mural design must be reviewed and recommended by the Commission on Cultural Development and finally approved by the City Council. An extension for good cause of the deadline for completion of the mural may be requested and if approved, the mural must be completed no later than June 15th, 2025. This item was reviewed and recommended for approval by the Business and Economic Development Committee on August 19th, 2024. I move passage of order 24 dash two-six-four.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Dean, we have a motion, we have a second. Counselor Trumbull?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to recognize the work that the city solicitors put into getting us to this point. And also John Terry, the former city engineer, did a lot of work to make this happen. And it's only because of the success of Waterfront Concerts that we had to change this up. I was just thinking back when I, I think that, it wasn't the first meeting, but I hadn't been on the council very long and a group of C V B came to the city and they said, "We'd like your support. We're going to apply for this festival that comes to Bangor. It's called the National Folk Festival." And I'm like, "Yeah, okay, see if you can make that happen." And, and they did. And we, on a snowy February day, they came to Bangor. We came, we were on the top floor of what's now Bangor Savings Bank and looked over a desolate waterfront. And I can't believe they decided to come here, but they did. It has really transformed the waterfront. People saw what could happen. And there was actually, there was a music festival a few years, I can't remember what the name it was, but after Folk Festival started, there was a music festival for a few years, like,
Kabang?
Kabang, I think that was it. Kabang went kaboom, but anyway, after that, we got the waterfront. Alex Gray saw the, had a vision for the Waterfront Concerts. It started small, it has grown, he's got a 17,000 square, 17,000-seat facility there now, which is state-of-the-art. The artists come up from all over. And he's got great amenities. Kenny Chesney was here a couple weeks ago, posted a picture going around in the go-karts in the back area. I ran into Alex the other day and I said, "Jeez, Kenny brought his go-karts with him?" He said, "No, we, we provide those for the groups so they have something to do while they're, you know, while they're here." They've got a lot, they've got like a couple of mini golf course holes back there. So there's a lot of amenities there for groups to come. And this, when they expanded, they had to have additional egress and this is part of it. So it's just great, people have started to take Waterfront Concerts for granted. But I think this year, 28 shows. When they're in town, when there's a concert, the hotels are busy, the restaurants are busy. So it's, it's a great, it's great that we have, have this order tonight. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Thank you, seeing none, 24 dash two-six-four has passage. Last item.
24 dash two-six-five order authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive purchase option for development of a Veterans Affairs Community-Based outpatient clinic, C B O C, at the main business enterprise park. Counselor Trumbull?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, I'd move for passage of order 24 dash two-six-five.
Second.
This will authorize the city manager to execute a purchase option agreement for six developers submitting bids to the United States Department of Veterans Affairs to design and lease the 75,000 square foot outpatient clinic. The purchase options will be non-exclusive, allowing each developer an open competitive advantage to a VA award. These documents also bind the city to sell the property to the VA awardee should the VA select the subject process for the stated purposes in the agreement. The terms and conditions contained in the agreement shall pertain to the eventual purchase and sale contract and will include the following: that the property remain taxable in perpetuity or in the event the property is sold to a tax-exempt entity, a 100% payment in lieu of taxes will be required; that the development of the parcels remain true to the stated purposes of the VA award; the parcel configuration will be in acceptable form to the city; the developers shall be responsible for all feasibility studies, including any traffic studies, environmental assessments, harness off costs related to the facility, and the existing deed restrictions and covenants shall survive the sale of the property. The purchase option will open negotiations with an initial option fee and upon exercise, an additional option fee. The purchase price shall be $90,000 per acre. This was reviewed and recommended for passage of the Business and Economic Development Committee meeting on August 19th, 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Trumbull. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion or questions on this item? Seeing none, 24 dash two-six-five has passage. That goes to the end of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Comments from staff? Waves from the gallery, as per usual. Closing comments, Counselor Fish?
Good night.
Counselor Hawes?
Good night.
Counselor Yakobada?
Good night.
Counselor Trumbull?
Good night.
Counselor Fornia?
Good night.
Counselor Dean?
Good night.
And for me, good night as well. Thank you, everybody, we're again.